Okay, if everyone will please rise. Commissioner Jordan has ordered the leaders of that invitation and then we'll have the votes for the leaders.
Yes, I think that's right. Father, we've come this morning to thank you for your grace and mercy in blessing us to come out to conduct the business of the county. Lord, we thank you for all that you provide for this nation, Lord, and we thank you for our state and our county, and we ask you, Lord, to bless all that we do today, that we will accomplish those things that we need done in a blessed way, in Jesus' name. We thank you, we praise you. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners for October 4, 2017. First order of the business is the approval of the amendments from September 6, 2017, and September 18, 2007. Do I have a motion?
I'm chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the amendments of September 6 and September 18 of 2017 as modified.
Okay, how about a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The amendment stands approved as modified. Okay, second order of business is adjustments to the agenda, and I have several to add. Starting with under new business, number 10, the needs-based public school capital fund grant. Needs-based public school capital fund grant. It's my fault.
Under 10?
Yes.
Excuse me, it will be number 8. It will be number 10.
Yeah, under new business, it will be number 10, under new business. I'm sorry. It's a needs-based public school capital fund grant.
Four are?
No, sir. They said they'd renumbered to six, seven, eight, and nine. There was a new agenda with the correct numbering on your space. We recognized that the numbering was off.
It confused me, Ms. Jordan.
What is that?
Needs-based public school capital fund grant.
Yes.
It's my fault.
I abbreviated.
Number 11, proclamation for older American month. Proclamation for older American month. Something we all can relate to.
We're going on there.
Number 12 is the EMS letter of support to COA. Okay, so has everybody got a second? Is any of our adjustments to the agenda? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda for October 4, 2017 as adjusted.
A second?
Second.
Motion has been made, profit second. All those in favor of adopting the amendment, I mean, the agenda as modified, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, moving along. Under delegations, under nice delegations, we have Sherwood Easton. Good morning, Mr. Easton. If you'll say your name and address.
Hello. Sherwood Easton, NC 227, NC 37, South Gatesville.
Right.
My reason for being here this morning is intersection, it's the other side of my high ass, which is the intersection of Highway 37 and NC Business, 158 Business West. DOT has pretty much stopped maintaining that. It's been a problem ever since I was a boy. I don't know if anybody's been killed there, but it's getting more and more of a problem now, especially with sales, and it makes it a lot worse, I reckon. But at this point, the paint that they put down there, when they changed that intersection the last time, they left it full width, so it's not just one lane coming out toward Gatesville. It's too wide, but now you're almost on it before you see anything. That part of it is up and gone, the other is dull. Back behind that, there's a regular stop sign, make bigger ones now. It needs something, and to talk to some wider level is not going to, local is not going to mean anything. Need something other than District Division, if you know anybody in particular, everybody out here retired, did, moved on, or something. My neighbors see that, I've been trying to get in the neighbors coming this way, but I don't know what I'm digging in. I follow the sees at all the time, my neighbor, people coming through there, not doing it properly. Neighbor Robert Williams came up to the high ass the other day, and he was shaking, and he came through there, 18 women, suburban men in there. I'm forever, I'm just going into a stop. I see somebody coming out, I just slow up and let them have it. But I think there's a lot of reasons. There's certain times of the year, I think somebody do it on purpose, when the leaves off and the front side, you can watch traffic run over the road over there and take a chance. A lot of people just not paying attention, or people traveling, don't know where they are. Sometimes you'll see a tire marks, a truck is hit almost all the way through, and they prompt to back up and go back around, so if somebody is watching the corner, they don't want a ticket on the record. Sometimes somebody came back at the night, looked where they're going, just ran right through the aisle. But you know, if I'm working, I'm in a position to see it, and I go that way a lot, too. So if I'm at that, pretty much, there's a 24-hour period, it's probably surprising what happened. Paul Lillard sees it all the time. It's just a matter of time, I'm afraid, before something gets real close and somebody can't make up their mind what to do and throw up their hands. And I was wondering if they were planning on paving it this year, and who put me off because of that. But it needs to be at least something done, something on the record, in a somewhat, I can clear my conscience a little bit. Y'all got something on the record, and somebody comes in, might have something done. It needs to be repainted, maybe a bigger stop sign, some rubble strips, maybe nothing but wants to run over there is probably. It just needs to be some attention brought to it and something done, and I'm giving people talk about that all the time, so if I'm out there in a position to see it, or if almost anybody else could follow that, probably see just as much living there. But if I'm working anywhere around the block at home, I guess nothing to look at. And funny thing about it, I can just stand beside the road, and somebody come by, a lot of times, people have a guilty look if they've done something. I said, if people come by, would even think to know what they've done? Just go and get them, take everything's all right. So if y'all could do something to get it on the record, like I say, for me to talk to somebody, it wasn't worth something, you know, I think I did a good disability. Division, district, if you know anybody in particular, I don't know who the highway commissioner is, and I know, I don't know when it stopped, but at one point, they came in every year, presented the new program, and it'd be district division, highway commissioner, be about a half a dozen, and it was ideal time of the year for commissioners to talk about present the new program. And if anybody in all these wants to talk about special problems and things, it worked real good. I don't know when that was last time.
I don't remember.
Would you be in favor of maybe you and Ms. Lilly and someone else just writing down some of the issues that you see as resolved and near accidents or concern?
Well, I could write down some of the things I told you this morning, but if you could get somebody to come, and they wanted us to meet them and talk with them, that'd probably be the best.
Well, my reason for saying that is if what we, if it was board, we may send a letter to the local highway department, district engineer, and let them know that, you know, rubble strips, larger stop signs, or something would be done based on these issues that you've worked for, for, as you were saying.
It would probably be best if one day somebody could come and just make an appointment. I would try to meet them and get some of the neighbors and just go down there and talk with them and show them. You know, I'm always saying when somebody's wondering to ditch whatever, is that the dog? I'm not going to say too much, you know, but usually the guy, and the only first sign was going to be being killed there, was a pedestrian. But it's, I just feel like it's a matter of time before somebody's got something that's on their mind, and two, get real close, and both go the same way instead of opposite ways, and throw up their hands, and, I mean, you know, somebody's coming through there 60 miles an hour, and somebody else is getting ready to turn to go the other way, and cellphones are called a lot now, you know, people have got other things on their mind, so.
Well, I think certainly we can send a letter to the district or division office with our concerns, and because we need to be proactive, we don't need to wait until something happens that we can't.
It's way overdue. I should have been there and said something similar, and I've said something different once a few times, when we talked about, when Mr. Williams came to the high ass the other day, he was still shaking, and he came into the way, he was in the intersection, and I asked him to let us throw up the suburban net right in there. And like I said, it's nothing for me, I go that way a lot, nothing for me to be getting ready to go to 158 Business West, and I've come to a complete stop.
Well, it's been brought my attention.
Well, I said it a few years ago.
And the Lily said something to me, probably four or five years ago, and I went local with it, and you were right, nothing took place, so I'm overdue for DOT to do something about it. I can tell you that they don't keep the grass up in that intersection, just this is for the rest of you folks. Janet Lilly takes her riding mower out there and cuts the grass in that median because it looks so bad, and that is dangerous.
Well, now, you see, what I'm talking about, and she's cutting grass, she would get killed.
Yeah, absolutely. As a matter of fact, things look good. As a matter of fact, she was out there, and then brought it to my attention. She was cutting grass one day, and somebody, she had a close call, and I caught on her riding mower, cutting grass in the median there, and observations, I guess because you brought it to my attention, she brought it to my attention, and I could have been there pretty quickly. I look, and you can see tractor trailer black marks all the way through the intersection where they go to the left. They're going too fast, or they're not familiar, and they realize it, they'll lock their brakes, and you'll see black marks all the way through there, going the wrong, they're going the wrong way.
I think sometimes they, they will, they might try to look and go ahead, or sometimes I think they'll back up, because, you know, they don't want a ticket on the record, somebody reports, or somebody sees somebody, but you'll see what's just slid along with us. You see everything in the world.
I would recommend, here, what Sherwood's got to say, I would recommend the letter, the email, or whatever direction we take, together, go ahead and go to the district level.
I think it ought to be at least your district, ain't district in that, or division, or if you know anybody personally, or something, just, it's just, if it was maintained and everything up to snuff, it would be better than it is. But I mean, you would, I've tried to notice it a lot close the last few days, if you're going for either way, you don't even really see those yellow strips till you're almost on them, the dull, you're completely gone.
Andy, we can send a letter to the highway commissioner. He is from Dare County, and I've forgotten his name.
I don't remember who it is.
That's the regional person, okay. Well, I have an, our meeting at the end of October, I can, everyone that you just mentioned and more will be at that meeting, so I can take a letter, first one in.
I know Janet, Janet tries to keep it up and all, but I believe my wife out there, my girlfriend, who loves me. My chairman, if I can favorably with that letter, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Lloyd, to Jim Hugley, he's the one that manages, he's assistant district engineer, and he manages Gates County, so if you can direct it to Jim, he will. And if we don't get some action pretty quick, I think we need to do something else. And I would be glad to meet with someone tonight and talk to them, I'm sure Paul Lillard would, or any other neighbors, and talk about it, discuss it.
Well, if you can give Natalie some details, Natalie, you need details to put in the letter. If she's not back, we can give her the details. This is a first step. You know, a lot of times, we call people, and they'll come, and they say, you know, another example, but this is not going to.
And you know, the intersection's been changed over the years. I was committing one time, why didn't you do something? I did try to do something, we're done, you know, but it's funny, when I was the board, but none of them, you just came back to 158 Business West, and came back and stopped. Knew that was open, and the stop sign, instead of coming around like you do, the stop sign was dang late, and you get to look back like that, you know. But my mother and I almost got taken out one Sunday morning by a drunk, you know, came flying through there 60 miles an hour, but we were slamming on brakes in town. There's always been a problem, but.
It's it worse.
Cellphones are making a lot of things on the road, a lot more dangerous in cases where people just got too much.
I think we need a motion.
I'm chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to the department manager regarding concern for the highway department to make some type of upgrades, and take cautionary measures to prevent accidents at the North Carolina NC 37 and 158 Business West.
And if somebody just goes and looks, they'll say, I'm going to 150 on that street across the aisle, and tie, oh, gee, not opposed on them. Yeah, you just look at it, there's something right here.
And, you know, certainly, if we start putting larger stop signs, doing a paint job, doing rubble strips.
Just to get it repainted, and the stop sign, and you know, they've got some extra things that's a regular.
They got something that got lights around.
Need something.
Chairman, I'll say that, lady.
Okay, a motion's been made and second, and a discussion. Here and now, I will direct the county manager to propose a letter to send to DOT concerned the intersection, NC Highway 37, US 158 West.
Business West.
Business West. Okay, we don't have need to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they will respond. Okay, the next one is Connie Walton. And you bring your bodyguard with you?
Yes.
Why, not that bad? And then you state your name and address, please.
Sure. Connie Walton, Gatesville, South Gatesville.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. What can we do for you?
We're going to have my mother, who lives at Fort Eina, on the roof. She's an elderly, with a very low income, and her house, we've been to, like, several different resources, it's not in a livable condition, and when we talk to plan and zoning, they're stating that the loser gates, and it has this big deal on module. We're asking that the fee to, that rezoning waiver on her behalf, based on her income.
Have you been to the board of adjustments?
We called, and we was directed to phone you and ask for a phone to be with that.
Ms. Chairman, um.
Yes, sir.
They talked with me, gave a call, and explained the situation, and certainly this is a unique situation where the mother certainly is home, she's elderly, and you're trying, the family's trying to provide her a home, and it would certainly help them financially if they could be able to go forward for the justice and have those feet weighed, I think it's a five or $600 feet, which would be put towards her home, and I recommend that they come forward and ask for a waiver.
Are they asking, you're asking for, you're going to ask for a rezoning?
Right.
Okay, so that's the planning board.
Well, no, this is the special use permit fee.
She just said rezoning, so there is a difference in fee, and it's two different boards. That's why I just want to make sure that since Ms. Sherry's in here, it's two, we're all on the same page, so when the application is completed, we'll know which one.
Well, at this particular point, I don't think they're asking for a rezoning, they're asking for a waiver of special use permit fee.
Is that what you're asking, because that would allow, if that is granted, then you could put a single one or another one on the property. Okay. So is it a board of adjustment?
Madam Chairman, I, in this particular case, we've, the house has several options to work on that house, but it hasn't worked out over the years. I would make motion to waive the board of adjustment to this particular situation, and allow Ms. Walton to try for a special use permit, to put a, no life or, or, or whatever.
Okay, a motion has been made. I think you just have, because it's kind of just new to us. The planner is here, would you like to step forward, please? And I know you are new, too, so you don't have any history of this.
That's it, they come.
Okay, you come, so, okay.
We talked.
Take your answer.
At first, she wanted a rezoning, but I see now that it would go to the board of adjustments, and that would be a, bring her, request a variance is what we do.
Okay.
No, it's a special use.
Special use.
Yes.
Speak up.
I'm sorry. Yes, it would be a special use permit, and the board of adjustments would hear that, and the fees charged for that are usually to cover their costs, and we talked a little bit about it, and she said she would call Commissioner Jordan, and that's what she had done at that point. And the next meeting would be in November, I told you that as well, it would be in November that we would be able to meet on an application.
Okay, of course, you don't know if any history of, like, waiving fees before.
Now, I don't know many of the history of it.
No, I'm just trying, I always have all the board of adjustments, so I don't know.
I have a question. Have you been contacting Ms. Walton from the Essential Single Family Rehab Program?
Um, we've been through a lot of programs, and I do have that, because I've been in talks to the senior, which is her, and her daughter.
No, ma'am, this is specifically, your mother was an applicant for the Essential Single Family Rehab Program, and I was just checking to see if you heard back from them.
She didn't qualify.
Okay, she didn't.
Madam Chair, please, madam chair.
They don't qualify.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go any further, I have some discussion points. Will the board allow Commissioner Jordan to withdraw his motion so that we can have some discussion? I'm at a point where I can't deny him his second, or give him his second, until I have it.
Well, I would go on my motion to have a discussion.
Is that real to the board?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, so.
Okay, so.
There was a process that we had to do a certain way.
Okay, so she had applied to the single, but she did not qualify.
I don't remember the details, but for whatever reason, we were not able to follow through. I think at one point, there were some air issues, couldn't get the.
They cleared it up.
Very quick. Finally got it cleared.
Yes.
There's a lot of things involved, but never able, never able to get the normal program, so the family, the houses is in such a situation now, that the family really needs to gather in a livable, nice home. The floors, I think, are in very bad shape, and, you know, you fall on the floors, I think. So, you know, it's fairly urgent, and I think, you know, with children being willing to finance bringing a new home, that certainly is a problem that's going to go right now.
Madam Chair, I think one reason why we may be hesitating, or especially I'm hesitating, anyone else, people myself, that we know that there are, these fees are, have to be paid. They're either paid by the applicant, or they're paid by the taxpayer. They are, they're not fees that we can, that just disappear. We, the board of adjustment are paid, each member on there is paid immediately here. There are, before that happens, there are advertising fees that has to be advertised in the local papers and on other media also, and these fees are valid, they're absolute, and someone has to pay, either the applicant or taxpayers in general. That's why I haven't paid anyway.
Commissioner Felton, you know, he's correct in his description of the situation, they don't just disappear, so, you know, we're looking at this one taxpayer, your mother, who we certainly understand the situation, we'd like to help, but got to think about the county taxpayers as a whole, with everything that we do, you know, it's police car, whatever, you know, every sheriff's, everything's car, whatever, we have to look at every taxpayer to do that. My hesitation is, I have a couple of questions I want to get, want to get answered, so I don't have to vote, and so now that, I don't know how far I want to go back and ask this question, we'll go back as far as you know. Have we, have we honored a request like this in fact? Did you?
I cannot remember one that I can think of that's been here, but I don't remember if anyone's actually come before us, and it may have been one.
I feel, I feel sure we've had some come before us, I think I remember, I don't remember the resort.
I don't know if it was board of adjustments or plan.
Yeah, or it might have been a permit fee, maybe there's something on a permit fee.
Right, we waived some permit fees.
Right, I can tell waived some permit fees.
And for so much less, but, and, you know, we, we can take, you know, each situation has its own merit, its own circumstances, and you can set precedence that when you do these type of things, but regardless of that, the check will be written for the advertising and to the people on the board, and the advertising fee, is it 500?
I'll look up which one this one is. I always get them backwards, so, one's 600, and one's 500, and I've always had to check them.
Do you remember?
It's the 600.
It's the 600.
Okay.
That does manage the question, the actual advertising call.
Advertising has been ranging anywhere from, depends on how large the ad is as well.
From 200 to 400.
No, the small one, if they're the only ones who are going before the board, 200, it's the large ones that cost the 400.
How much, how many weeks has been, like?
And there's seven members on the board of adjustment.
Well, there's five city members and two alternates.
So that's $350, but, yeah, that's, that's six, $700 actual call. The thing about it is, you're looking at a situation where it's, it's an unusual situation, it's a situation where the family member doesn't have the, where it's all to upgrade the home that's needed, the family member's forced to have to hit and try to move together to do it, you know, how many, how many of those types of situations do we have in Canada?
The deed is clear.
The deed is clear.
Okay, it seems like it's been, uh, everything is, our forces have been lined up against you.
That's the way, that's the way it's been too, Ms. Hall.
Uh, but it's.
That's the way it's been. And the house now is, uh, right, just letting, you know, stop because they're gonna build that office. And so we stopped doing things. And, well, if you let the things go for a while, you know how, how it end up.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, then it got to that point, and then they said, no, there was something else. So now here we are ten years later. And she needs something, I mean, she's gonna need some help. They do, they the one that told her to stop, don't do no more to it. And her income won't cover it. And like I said, she have children, that's true. But I'm just saying, and I can't, I got enough building to house again. I got the new house. And I did it right now from, uh, most of the eastern end. And it takes money to try and keep that going. And, uh, my other sisters and them, they have homes. And it takes it for them also. And we are trying and do what we care for, but we just need some help.
Madam Chairman, I, um, just to comment to the board today, I, I think we don't vote on this today. I hope some more thought is given to this situation and circumstance. And maybe to the, uh, to the point that we feel it necessary to discuss, uh, coming to Commissioner Jordan made about, uh, what took place back in two thousand four, and was that, uh, was that the right thing to do, not condemning anybody who was on board at that time? But do the current circumstances, uh, counting like not just your circumstance, but does that, uh, is that an equitable, uh, stance for us to take? Uh, it may be, or it may not be, but, uh, I, I hope that we don't, that we don't vote on your situation today. But that this causes us to address the overall, uh, transactions of May two thousand four. And see, it needs to be adjusted, maybe it doesn't. We weren't bombed in the, uh, the, the, uh, the zoning, I'm sorry, the zoning boards, I, I referenced two thousand four. That zoning woods, and just see if that is, if that's good for our citizens, or is it harmful to our citizens?
Well, I think that's a, uh, a, 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 a large issue. I don't think it's, um, I think that we don't even kind of keep the, the can down the road, um, concerning that because this is a living, breathing situation here. Um, and personally, I, you know, I think we need to try to figure out what to do and, and then just take a look at sometimes. But I think that it is plans to take a look at maybe, uh, redoing some of our ordinances. But that doesn't have to, to be signed, okay?
There was a comment, you have any word again?
Yeah.
That, that was, that was just a comment.
Well, I, I certainly, uh, we're, we're, I, I, I understand positions of, you know, we, we don't want to start doing something for one that we don't believe in. I sort of understand that. Uh, but also recognize that sometimes you got the weak situations. There's a lot of situations where it, it merits, uh, making an exception. And I think, I think this is, is one of those cases. And, you know, when you bring someone else's case alongside, someone else's case, uh, in a similar situation, then, then we, we look at it the same way. But, uh, you know, but these are our citizens. Uh, we put these ordinances in place. And, uh, we recognize that, that they're not always the most suitable, nor probably the most appropriate many times. And, uh, we can't make exceptions. That's why we sit here. That's why we're commissioners. Because we can make those decisions. And, uh, and I would certainly hope that the board would, uh, just give some, some heart to this and look at what, uh, the efforts are to try to upgrade the situation. Uh, you know, in, in reality, we have a situation where, uh, if our inspection department knew about it, we have a primary national ordinance, you know, unsafe homes are something that's supposed to be banned. And, uh, you know, but we, we, we don't implement it many times as, as harsh as it, as it would appear to be because it causes a situation where people would be homeless if we didn't, uh, if we did that. So I think this is a situation where if we could allow the, uh, family to go before the Board of Justice and let them make a decision, the only thing they can do is make a decision on whether or not they can get a special. Just forget, uh, I know there's advertising fee, and I know there's, uh, Board of Justice will have to sit, uh, and make those decisions. But there again, I think the overall good that will come out of this, uh, outweighs the expense that, uh, that we'll be putting forward to have that decision made. So I would, Madam Chairman, I would, I would like to restate my motion that, uh, we waiver the Board of Justice a fee for, uh, the Walton family to, uh, go before the Board to act more specialist than they do to, uh, put a, my, my home, uh, in the place of a single home, you know, my little.
Yeah, the motion has been made. Do you have a second? I, I will second. So that we can have good. Uh, and I do believe, I'm generally, I, you know, rules are rules and, but they are sometimes exceptions. And the problem again is that they have been through so many different, they went to social services, and there was problems with the property, the ownership of the property, and got that cleared up. He went to the single family and that was denied for.
For the, uh, condition of home?
Well, cause the condition of home, which they had told not to do anything to the home because everyone thinks one should be replaced. And then, um, you were, your family members are stepping up to the plate to do something for your mom, to put her in a safer home.
Yes.
Uh, I don't think we, when we vote, I would say this was an exception, not a precedent to start in the future. Uh, and the Board of Adjustments will hear it. It, now, I will not say my name, but, you know, that is, we don't, we don't have control of them. Uh, and, you know, they need on a local basis, so if the cost is really the appetite, the cost that we would have to eat, so to speak, or they're all, but that's the only reason that I am doing it is not to set any type of protocol for the future. It's because of the unique circumstances of this individual and what the family's trying to do. And, you know, we have to have, in our job, we have to have some, um, empathy and, you know, and humanity to help the old people. And who knows? I just, that's the way I'm thinking.
You, you're thinking that, uh, certainly they exhausted all means possible, as it appears, and so answer my question.
I don't disagree with anything that, uh, anybody has said, but before we vote on this, I think we need to categorize the specifics that we all want to go by to allow someone to not pay the fees and know that we say you have to pay the fees.
Well, like I say, I do believe that we need to say, list the things that we went through, you told, went to DSS, you went to get that, there was problems, you straightened that out. You were told not to continue to prepare the home because you're going to get a new home. Then that fell through. The cost was too costly. So I think we need to make clear all of those things that are heard beyond the control. It's like a perfect storm. Nothing worked in your favor.
I think, uh, as, as Chairman said, that kind of categorize that someone who has gone through the normal process, uh, might have gone through at least two processes, uh, that did not work as a result of, no, no fault in their own. And now they're the last resort, trying to do something themselves. So I think that categorize if someone who's gone through that type of, uh, of metrics, if you will, uh, to upgrade their home or repair their home, then those, they have come forward to the Board at this particular time. So I think that kind of sets a categorization of what have you done to, uh, go by our, our orders trying to get here. And I think that, that's, uh, that's been said.
Okay, is it ready to, any other comments? I'll call for it. The vote? All of us in favor of Rachel, right hand? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, ask the fourth one.
Thank you, thank you all. Where's your breath?
Okay, moving on to administrative reports for County Manager.
This is for August nineteenth, December twenty second. Three company representatives attended the Spragueville pre-bid meeting on August the thirtieth. A bid opening was scheduled for September the twenty first. Only two bids were received for each basic project. General statute requires three bids, and the bids will return to the bidders. Projects are in the process and currently being re-advertised with a bid opening on October the nineteenth. If less than two bids are received, the bids are allowed to be opened. Bids are scheduled to be approved like, like the November first, two thousand seventeen Commissioner meeting. On August the twenty ninth, Chair Hoffler, Billy Lynn, Stormy Butts, Nine Deb, the Centerra Hospital, Alamooral Representatives sworn about services offered and new programs that have been implemented. September the twelfth, the quarterly Alamooral Commission County Manager meeting was held. Main topic of discussion was the Alamooral Commission's request to build a new facility. And questions and documents have been received since that meeting, and they are included later on the agenda for discussion. September the thirteenth, driven our Convention Council met and reports were provided by Genesis, and I'll turn this for you. On September the twenty second, Gatesville Old Mission third graders toured the historic courthouse, and thank you to Chair Hoffler for conducting the tour. Also, as of yesterday, received some information from Ray Felton concerning the middle school project that I would like to share with you. And it relates specifically to the drawings. He said that they requested five drawings be turned in to the Board of Education by today, no later than October the fifth. On Septem-, I'm excuse me, on October the fifth, they're requesting the seventh grade renovations, architectural designs, as well with plumbing as an addendum. Because at this time, they are planning on building the eighth grade wing and other renovations will be a separate issue. Bids are received today or tomorrow. Then they will be advertised for bid on October the fifth or the sixth. There will be an optional pre-bid meeting on October the seventeenth. The bid opening will be held at Central Middle School on October the thirty first. They would like to send all preliminary information to the LGC by, by November the seventh, and have a meeting with the LGC to approve funding on December the fifth. I spoke with Ray, yesterday, Ray Felton, and I let him know that our audit most likely will not be ready by December the fifth meeting. And he said that actually would be okay because at this point in time, they do not want to try to move students during the middle of the school year. And so if we cannot go until February, that would not affect their timeline too much. They have submitted, that has been added to the agenda, the Need-Based School Construction Grant. And if they apply, they said there is a match that is required, and we will discuss that later during the, uh, that section of the meeting. But the award will be sometime in November, and they would like to request two point five million dollars for most of it going to renovate the seventh grade wing. And the preliminary submission to the LGC will be for whatever they can afford based on the eight million dollars. And then final submission to the LGC may include some addendums based on the grant application.
Any questions for County Manager?
When did you say the bids were open?
Their date to open the bids right now is gonna be October the thirty first, Halloween.
Natalie, what are, what are the conditions of needing the Need-Based School grant, construction grant?
That's why it's been added on to the agenda so we can discuss the packet that he left with me late yesterday afternoon.
So that's another grant that may be available in case the LGC doesn't approve.
No, sir, that, that is, is, is separate from LGC addition. I mean, it's separate from the eight million dollars. But the complete application that he left, you have a copy of it after this. And that's why it was added because it does need, um, signature from the county. And I have not received any bids or information from regards to historic courthouse construction.
Okay, um, I have to see Ms., uh, Ms. Felton, and I think he made a personal visit to the architects because he was not pleased that they were not meeting timelines. He's on top of that. Okay, um, uh, finance is not here.
They are in, uh, a meeting today with EMS regarding Medicaid funding.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Lane and the Tax Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Opportunity to, uh, see the tax related report. Questions on that, um, I say report, and observations?
The Zakiya's funds, are most of those, uh, just for collections, any foreclosures, anything like that?
Um, well, the, the recent activity that closed, the Dan Lassiter email that I sent you, that deed was finally recorded. Uh, ahead of that, of course, all the fees, uh, charges, including demo charges, were collected in that, so. Um, there are no active foreclosures pending sale at this time. Uh, we usually get that list from, uh, Mark Bardell and, and Zakiya's, you know, ahead, um, usually about a month and a half. But those, those funds that we received can seem to trickle in through various accounts after charges, any, any additional thing. And like I said, I did email you that Darren Lassiter, uh, property that, that we finally got transferred, if you will.
Well, certainly, they have acted in a prompt and efficient way than our previous individuals that we've been doing.
Certainly, yes ma'am, we're pleased with that, um.
Looking at the, um, the bottom of the funds collected through DMV, is, uh, I don't have last month's report, is that, is that getting consistent?
On the average, it is. Let's see, what we had for previous there, um, it's usually forty, sometime it might be based on those, uh, uh, additional. We had fifty-two thousand, over fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars on previous months. Sometimes fifty-four based on the new renewals that they should come through. So, and, and that varies. On the average, it might be in that range of fifty-two, fifty-four thousand on the high.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that we have a request for refunds?
Yes, that is correct. On refund, oddly enough, that you received, uh, refund, refund number one, uh, in the amount of one eighty-one and twenty-seven cents. Uh, it was an overpayment, of course, by a title company. Uh, instead of a prepayment there, you've got that documentation, the screenshot.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the refund request?
So.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
Second, in a discussion. Karen, none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that refund is approved. And I saw also that you have, uh, public service utilities that value and all? And this is done by state, correct?
Uh, it is. Every, every September, we get those values certified by the OR. These, uh, public service companies report directly to Department of Revenue. Uh, in turn, Department of Revenue sends those values to every county in the state, and then we bill accordingly. I referenced the levy, uh, valuation amount of the levy, um, as it's, um, appeared. We added, um, oddly enough, three, um, new, uh, public service companies, one of which we did not bill because that valuation amount is under five hundred dollars. And for that new Senate bill, they came out, Senate Bill six forty-eight, if that valuation is under five hundred, uh, more often than not, their bill is generated. So, uh, it might be something on the form of, sometimes we see these old pager services that are lingering out, that's usually what it might be incorporated. But we added, uh, American Tower Court was a new addition for this year. You, you'll see that added, uh, as well as T. Mogul South LLC was, was added.
Which one was that?
Uh, yes ma'am, very top one, American Tower Court was a new addition for us, as well as T. Mogul South. And they've naturally been billed. We've gotten a few payments trickling in for those, most of them.
And the third one?
Um, the third one was the MCI. Uh, the MCI, the new pension service that was added, however, that is of, of low, low value, if you will, under the five hundred. Uh, like I said, some of those, um, maybe the pager service, um, functions that used to be utilized, um, whatever it is, 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 is.
Want to make sure I'm not looking, uh, something. How many, um, solar companies are on here? I see one.
We just have the one, uh, valued by the OR. The Gates Solar, um, and the Sugar Run LLC are appraised as business personal. There is a stipulation if that power is being, um, with solar or wind, uh, company. If that solar company or wind company, if you will, sells electricity to anyone other than the public, then public, it is not a public service, um, corporation, if you will. So those are valued within the tax office, those two, uh, Gates Solar and then the Sugar Run.
They're just not classified as a utility?
They, they are not.
They're commercial?
They, that is correct. That is, uh, the case with, uh, Perford County with the big Duke, uh, substation outside of Muffet's Row. Um, that is appraised by Department of Revenue. The others located within that, uh, county, much like our two that we have are appraised within the tax office.
Could you, uh, excuse me, could you, uh, email us, uh, the value on the other two that you, that you named, Sugar Run and, you know?
Yes.
Email us the value and what their tax base.
Yeah, I can email you. Uh, we've kind of already worked up the figures, just, just as FYI, but I'll certainly email you, um, what they are specifically. Uh, Sugar Run Solar, the valuation on that for just the business personal property, the panels, the fencing, uh, that deal equates to, um, let's see, um, looks like, uh, the land portion now, they do get the land portion of that, is over two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars uh, for the actual listing with the, uh, business. Let's have a look.
Business would include fencing and the shields?
That is correct.
You said it's two thousand, is that the tax value?
Uh, again, that's just for the land portion, if you will. And this is on the share.
That's the tax deal?
It is. Now, for the BPP, just for the, the solar, what we had was well over the valuation, uh, two million, uh, two point five million, if you will.
Sugar Run?
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
And the taxes due on that?
Uh, the taxes for that portion is about, we weighted about ten thousand, two fifty-two, what was that? But I, I was certainly, well, forgive me, I think I referenced the, the last year's bill, uh, for that, but I will certainly, uh, email you that, yeah. Cause that is separate, and we do appraise those accordingly with, um, you know, what is listed for the fencing. And I, I thought I had seventeen, but I do, I do not. I reference the last, what we bill for, for land shield.
Just for the public, um, the SOL NC Power Six location is, that, that is located where?
Uh, that is the one with, uh, the Dora Collins Hill property, oh, one fifty-eight, before you approach the John Deere. Um, that acreage seventy-two point one, ten acres, if you will. Um, that is, that bill usually comes to Duke Energy, sends us those funds. Uh, we looked at all the, um, the tax bills just for that land, uh, four thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents just for the land portion that we set aside in our scheduled values naturally to address all the solar and cell, you know, sites in the county.
The public's interested in, uh, what their tax bill is, and for seventeen eighteen, their tax bill is fifteen thousand five hundred seventeen dollars forty-three.
Mm-hmm, yes sir. I'll follow up with the others, uh, with the Sugar Run Solar certainly, and the, uh, other with the Gates Sugar Run.
Thank you.
Okay. My question is, we have various towers in county that do not have anything on those. Do you know any more cell towers going up, or?
Um, I believe there is one proposed, or I'm not sure if, uh, the planning board has got that data. We, we.
No, no, that's our only question.
Okay.
But those that have just towers up, are the taxes not on, but until they put some, some carrier on it, correct?
Uh, as soon as that tower goes up, we do allocate a site based on that January one snapshot in time, um, you know, if it's there January one, of, of eighteen.
Like the one down, um, at Old Chapel, or what place is Old Chapel, um, on thirty-two, as you go up toward, like, well, get up on Elmont's List property, does that say anything on that?
Mm-hmm, right. Well, that date of towering is, we still allocate, uh, twenty thousand per site, uh, for that tower site for the land. So we, we have, um, collected, you know, we, we assess that accordingly, uh, based on the scheduled values.
Okay, and then at least, how's the new, um, included innovation on your software data conversion, is that going?
Um, it is going well, yes. We intend on going running, uh, parallel, uh, November first. There will be some, some dates. You could get a projected schedule. Uh, we don't see anything really hanging us up as we move into the latter part of October and doing some final collections. And our CAND, which is all of our appraisal data, uh, into the end of this month and running parallel, uh, November. Um, your projected schedule may have had some alternate dates, um, and whatnot. And the County Manager and I kind of touch base on that and everything. And we're, we're pushing ahead. We, we're looking forward to all those good things coming with the, with your software.
Okay, any additional questions? Karen, thank you so much.
Good day.
If I may, since you did bring up software, I will report that the inspections is permitting because this month will begin to run parallel with their new software as well. And we'll be using their new software solely beginning in January.
Okay, and our reports, articles of interest?
Uh, Madam Chair, just while Lisa's here, I'd like to ask her, uh, what is the progress with Atlas?
With Atlas? Oh, can I, why haven't you done our reports? Yeah, let me come to the microphone. We've done our reports for the last two months as we discussed at our other meeting in August. And hasn't been a month and a half yet. So we haven't received anything back except for some of the earlier changes that I think we talked about. But we hope when the month and a half is up that we have something in the FTP server to report. But we are sending our reports in a timely manner. But we are sending our reports in a timely manner. And we had quite a lot this month. So we hope to see that updated.
Right.
And we have something a little bit later by customer service that will come by. Okay, moving along. There's no public hearings today. There is old business, wood, foreign patron policy that we have in our book for the county. Everyone has read through this. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it, if those of you who work in businesses or with federal government or state government, it is something that we see here come through.
And we did, if I may, on the hepatitis B vaccine declaration form, we get an added statement as requested.
Okay. That was, you know, I think Commissioner Jordan asked for that, and it is on this one. Are there any additional comments about this?
I'm sure Human Resources keeps up, is that who keeps up with that?
Yes, we keep up with it.
And if we had any reports that we're aware of?
Any reports of what? All of our, everyone who's been eligible to take the hepatitis B vaccine has taken it.
And we've had no reported dissonance?
We've had someone refuse it, but then they came back and decided that they would take it.
How about we skip more questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made, second, any formal discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I need, we need to raise our hands, this is a policy matter. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, okay, it's approved, 5 to 0. Okay, moving on to a new business. Does anybody, we did just stretch for a, or anything? New business, the nursing home community, the nursing home community advisor committee has three vacancies at the present time, and we have heard, we have applications for two. For re, appointment? Okay, child, oh yeah, child is first.
Right, is that your?
That's in my, up here. Okay, on our, on Gates County Child Fatality Task Force, we needed an appointment from a parent who had a deceased child, and we have an application and a recommendation from Karen Ridley to the chairperson to appoint Christie Conquinn to that committee. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Conquinn, Catherine Conquinn, to the child protection, the child prevention team, as requested, based on her willingness to serve.
Yeah, it's Christie.
Christie.
Okay, a motion has been made to appoint Christie Conquinn to this child fatality prevention team. Do I have a second?
This one, no.
Okay, we have a second, and any formal discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So Mrs. Conquinn, you're voted by Mrs. Ridley, so her appointment has been approved. Okay, appointments to the child fatality, I mean, to the Gates County Community Nursing Home Committee. There are three people up for reappointment, two have handed in applications. They, Jordan Smith and Bernice Johnson. We have, obviously. Okay, and the third? Put you out?
Put Julian.
Julian Parker. Do I have a motion to reappoint these three ladies to the Gates County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee?
So moved, Madam Chairman. And are they three, Ms. Parker, Ms. Smith?
No, it's Hathaway, Johnson, and Smith.
Okay. What's this called here?
It does say Parker on her application.
Her name is Parker or Hathaway?
Parker.
Parker, okay. Okay. Look at these names. Okay, do I, we have, do I have a motion that we reappoint all three?
So moved, Madam Chairman, second.
Okay, a motion that they made, probably second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor appoint these three ladies to back to the committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And we would like to thank them for their service, certainly a very important committee. Okay. Our next is the revised customer service policy. Ms. Hendrix, will you, I pray you need to come and explain what's up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
A lot of this is just text changes with changing the wording from division to department. As you see, everything was highlighted in yellow. We did make a few amendments in there, like on page five, regarding notifying the customer service department if there was someone in the household that was handicapped, disabled, chronically ill, so they could be flagged. If the account was not paid, the water would not be disconnected. But if these are medical forms, we need them updated every six months because things change. On page six at the top is, we were having some businesses that when they opened the account, they wanted to do everything over the phone. We really do need an actual signature on our file. So we asked for someone from, a representative from the company to come in and sign the documentation to open the account. And in the event of an account holder death, that we were asking the family to come in within 45 days, either close the account or change the name to someone else to carry on the account. That is just to keep our records clean and up to date.
I guess, we talked about this a little bit.
Yes.
There's nothing that's going to occur if they don't come in and report by, as I say, if it's 9:00 a.m. I understand that, you know, we want to keep this, our records up to date. But most of our customers don't read the policy.
That's true. For things that will be changed, we'll put a flyer in the, in the bill, or even notes in the bill, so they can be aware of this. Because they, we have had customers, we catch up the windows, if you please, please change the account. Because we're sending out bills to CC.
I'm wondering if maybe that should be a little notation on the bill, you know, just a little standard notation.
We can do that.
That way, you know, anyone, everyone will know that, you know, 45 days if something happens, it needs to be taken care of with a different.
Right, there are no repercussions on there. We're just asking to do that, to help keep our accounts clean and updated.
I'll say that before the bill, go to the right place.
To the right place.
Because it could be that C.S. force in that home's closed, you know, closed and, you know, no one's living there or whatever.
And it actually takes three months if someone has moved, before the post office will recycle it and send it back to us. They will hold them for that length of time.
It's 45 days on things of that nature. You're trying to keep consistently 45 days across the board, those type of things. It'd be easier for them to remember.
Right.
Yeah.
And at the bottom of the page, we have people coming in and inquiring about accounts that isn't someone else's name. And we do not give out information unless their name is on the account. On page seven, we say the seven towers a day. People come up to open an account, they have to provide us with a copy of those because we've been through this issue before with people moving into property and they have no right to be there. And if it's new purchased property, you've got closing documents from the county's office, just bring them on in. We just want to make sure it's legal on those sites. And let's see. That was just some cleaning up verbiage. I don't know why I was ever put there, for any need requires a separate meter reading sheet. Because when we do meter reading sheets, they're just listed one after the other. And then at the bottom of the page, the customer has an inactive account. With a balance, the balance will automatically be transferred to the active account. We have people coming in, maybe they have moved in with someone else and they have an account in their name, and they leave a balance on it, and they choose not to pay it. And then they come back in, and we're just trying to, as a means of collecting old balances, rather than, because previously, we have not been asking for social security numbers. And unless we, customer service has a social security number on file, we cannot send it to debt cell. We cannot use tax social security numbers. We have to use the ones we've collected ourselves. And this is just a means of combining bills. We know you've moved in, but you're back in the county, please pay your old bill.
I think there might be a problem with that statement, too. If the customer has an inactive account with a balance, how much balance will it transfer?
Okay, I can do that.
Madam Chairman, I have, while we're kind of bouncing around in that area, I have a question that I'd like to ask to do, or see if it's possible. And that is, when they have a connection or reconnection, as you mentioned a little bit earlier, is it possible they could copy their driver's license?
We do.
We do?
We do.
Never chance.
Mm-hmm. We keep that one down. They have to provide a picture ID. About it. I have had them, maybe they were 11 years old, they were taking.
And if they don't have a driver's license, any picture ID?
Picture ID, yes. And then on page eight, just request to put the late fee, the 10% late fee on the billing date, on the 60th. Because we have to allow 10 days between that date and the date we can do a disconnect.
Were they in great spirit, God?
Yes, sir.
And it is not because it's our will, it's because of state.
Right, school government says you have to do this.
By German statute.
By German statute, yes, ma'am. And on the bottom of page nine, we're just removing this. No adjustment for, like, a leak adjustment will be made without verification. We just don't have the manpower to go out and check every little leak, crawl into someone's house. We just do that on their word when they present a bill.
Efficiency, efficiency, ma'am.
Yes, correct.
They present a bill, like, from a plum or?
From a plum, that's exactly right. If they say they've had it fixed and they do not present the bill, because we can certainly tell when a leak has been fixed, we'll just split it half into it. An adjustment, and we do this once every 12 months, and it's with a 12-month average. And let's see. And the rest of it is kind of moot.
Well, I have a question on 10.
Okay.
Payment deposit in the box, I have a 5:00 AM movement to 10:00 AM.
That's what's on the back of our bills, because we collect it first thing in the morning. Because that's just, that's the time we collect post office payments. For anything that does come in the box, and we collect drop boxes at the very same time.
Okay, so you would go out, if you got stopped by at like 8:30, you would go out at 10 o'clock?
I know that happens, because on the cutoff days, we go out there, we check it first thing in the morning, and I go back out there and check it after 10 o'clock.
That's why, I was just answering.
Right, and it makes it consistent with what's on the back of the bills.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
How long, consistent?
Yes. And let me see, on page 11, midway there with the three. Under special circumstances, the county may choose not to interrupt service. That decision's made by me and the county manager, instead of the utilities department director. Just verbiage cleanup. And on page 13, again, this is just cleaning up. Because customer service does not take tax payments and has not taken tax payments for some time. So it's just cleaning that up. And on page 15, as you can see, this verbiage is just cleaning up the back of that piece. And again, when it comes to the cash management policy, just verbiage changing financial services director to finance officer.
What page are you on?
Page 21. And just cleaning up at the bottom of page 23. The tax administrator and the deputy tax administrator, neither one of those have a cash floor. And the return check policy on page 25 remains the same. There was one note that I would like to put into print that the county manager and I, we were discussing this, after this went into print, that if a business has their contract with, like, waste industries and they have their own dumpsters on site, so they're not using the landfills to reduce their landfill fee to 50%, the same is for the tiny gates, because they have a current type pickup. But their landfill fee is reduced to 50%. And just requesting to put that in print also.
How many businesses do we have that have their own pickup?
Charlie, there's one on record, that we know of.
Well, they decided not to do it after several months. They've already, you know, put this provision in there.
Where are the teeth, if that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
You could, you could request that they bring in the renewal every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that maybe.
Providing a sort of copy of that contract.
Right.
Yeah, not just verbally, but we have to have a copy of that contract.
I think that would be, yeah, every six months.
Would you say like an annual renewal or a six-months renewal?
Annual probably would do it.
I think that's what they would probably, uh, right, that's what I was saying, if you have a contract with, like, waste industries, is renewed annually, and we can put that in there to provide us a private contract annually.
Okay, up to date.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and if you could get that printed up really nice for us to look at.
I will, I understand, I have to.
And I do appreciate you highlighting the differences.
Yes.
That really is very helpful when you're reading through it.
I prefer that than to have the text changes on the side, you can really keep that, it's like it's.
Highlighting the part that's in the yellow.
Yeah, I really care attention to that.
Yeah, it'd be easier to read.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the changes in customer service.
Okay, when it becomes effective?
And, okay, when it becomes effective. Well, I think we need to see. Is that?
January one.
Well, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it in the October meeting, and I think probably first of the year will be.
This is October, or April, yeah. January one?
Okay.
Not general, I'm a motion that, I remember we gave away. See that? Customer service proceed with incorporating the changes, as noted and also as discussed, for our approval for next quarter, leading, she'll admit it at first of the year.
I hear a second.
Second question, ma'am, chairman.
Question being made, second, any additional comments?
County manager, do you perceive any problems with January one date?
No, that's not what I, I, you're just making a motion for her to bring it back.
Well, in essence.
In essence, but we didn't get approved.
That's why, that's why I was, yeah, I figured, because we need to have that. Or you can approve this and then approve that separately. That's up to you. But that, that's why I was looking, you're making a motion just for her to bring it back in essence.
With a noted changes.
Right.
And she also has to put some other information in there, of the client businesses, that's not.
Right, that's the only thing that's in there.
So bring it all together.
Just bring it back, but just a clean copy.
Well, it is a motion.
It is, yeah.
There is a motion in form.
I think the other, the two significant parts was the dumpster contract and the effective date for the things I think warranted over.
Okay, so I think, yeah, and it won't work, vote again. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Alamo Commission facilities update.
Do you remember in, is that obvious now? First office man, Lou Catty-Davidson, director of the Alamo Commission, came before you and presented some information about wanting to build a new facility. Well, there have been many questions that have come out of that proposal from two or three of the counties. And you have an email that we're going to forward and use this, should be somewhere in the rear passenger or the front table, that is talking about some answers to some questions that one of the counties presented. And one of the main questions dealt with the interlocal agreement. And they felt that if a county left the ten counties Alamo Commission region, would they still be responsible for their portion of the payment on a new facility? And in short, the attorney for Alamo Commission said yes. And there was also a question about does interlocal agreement even allow the Alamo Commission to have the authority to borrow money and build their own building? And the attorney said yes, he felt so. However, to make it even more clear, he is recommending that the resolution be amended. And that is what is entitled First Amendment to Resolution Modified and amending resolutions creating the regional planning commission, coming to Alamo Commission.
Easy to use, eh? Yeah. This is the First Amendment to Resolution Modified.
Yes. Yes, and then the other is the current interlocal, yeah, I'm gonna have to back up. The interlocal agreement. Yes. So what you would need to do is you would have to do the First Amendment. If you agree to amend the current interlocal agreement. So that Article Three, Powers and Duties, should now read, Alamo Commission shall possess all of the powers set forth and enumerated in North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three, eight, dash, three ninety-five, as such statute may be amended and/or replaced by successor statutes.
Okay, so we need to take that one up first. Is everybody clear on this?
And, and Chair Hoffler also sits on Alamo Commission and has been in discussions as well. The interlocal agreement is the one that was presented to you. Well, no, she did not present it. That is what they are asking for you to sign, saying that you would agree to allow them to build a building and help, and stay basically same number for forty years until the debt's paid off. That is one of the questions that many of the other counties have had questions about, not forty years, you have to have a new building. So most counties have held off on signing that one until this resolution amendment is passed by all ten counties. And also, Alamo Commission is looking again at other options. They have also, they were supposed to have had a discussion on them maybe last week as well with the Divisional Workforce Solutions, to see if they were going to be co-located in a facility. And if so, then that would change the size of the needed facility. Because the state requires so much work footage per person for their offices as well. So my recommendation would be to approve the resolution amendment. And then that would free up a little bit about what Alamo Commission could do and make other counties feel better as well. And then they can bring forth all of their options that they're investigating still.
And as county manager, I am Alamo Commission. You know, sometimes things look simple, straightforward, and then the, the details kind of pop by. And there were questions in a lot of the counties as well for that. And they are looking at a variety of options. There is no question that the space that they have now is not suitable. The, you know, they are looking at options, they are looking at options of like leasing space, but it's hard to find that much space, and then that's renovation costs as well. Building, a building to meet their needs is still on the table. And all regional councils have built buildings in their, on their own. And with the what they're paying in rent and lease agreements now, where policies are scattered, would be half the public cost of a new building, making the payments on a new building. But there are all options on the table, we're looking at each one, and see which one makes the best financial sense to us, but also so that we can carry a mission that we have been commissioned to do. And so I, I think that this First Amendment to Modify would be a good start so that, you know, we can go ahead. And like I say, I mean, everybody's very serious about trying to do the best and use that money as efficiently as possible and do the mission. And I would say, since we have this new director, you know, we have really been expanding our services. And I know all of you get the emails where you have openings available for jobs and workforce, and they're doing a, they're really trying to make it a service, I mean, to help provide services to us. And of course, Wheels on Wheels, we get all the town, that's part of it.
Have we heard what they're gonna do with the existing building?
Well, that building belongs to Quinnes County.
And Quinnes does have need for that space here.
So they're, so they're not selling the building and putting that asset in the debt?
No, we don't own it, own the building. And it's not been properly maintained, that is, needs a lot of work. You know, the building's blocked or in front of it, they've blocked it. Yeah, they've built that. And that's what creates some issues of like drainage and because it's flooding down part of the park lot. Yeah. But I mean, the water runoff.
Just sucks.
Yes. So there are some issues with that. That's not a good fit.
After the period of the recommendation about county manager and Alchaland, who is also, and it's from what I moved, that we accept, do that we have proved this resolution, the First Amendment.
And it really does tie our hands, like, we still have to debate on like what we do. But this just gives us a way to study and make like.
I second that motion, ma'am, chairman. And, and that, is that only the two-story building?
It's. That's what I was. It's a one-story building.
It's, it's that had the art.
It's well, it's, it's poorly, that building. It's really poorly designed building. And we agree on that. We have seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and for a discussion. Hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so we will do that, Alamo Facility, and we, the First Amendment.
And we're not gonna move on to the second resolution.
The second one gives them permission to go ahead and build a new building essentially.
We're gonna have to go study the options.
One other county had approved it before all the other questions came up. I do not know what they have decided since, but only one of the ten have agreed to that.
Okay, moving down to this added, first of all, we have the Need-Based Construction Fund on the table. As you can see, this is the guidelines, and for that, they're requesting that we give authorization to.
If I may.
Okay.
This is some of the money that is, has been made available to tier one counties only. And there is only a certain amount of money available. They have decided that they would apply, there's thirty million available, most you could ask was fifteen. They have decided that they would request two point five million dollars. The two hun, the, excuse me, the two million would be used to renovate the seventh grade wing. The five hundred thousand would go towards construction of the eighth grade wing. There are matching funds that are required. There is one dollar in local funds for every three dollars can grant funds received. I have sent an email to Ted Cole with that report, who are the financial advisors for this project, to clarify some information that Mr. Felton had received to make sure that it was correct. He had been told that the eight million dollars we've already allocated could be considered our match. And that is the way this application has been filled out. So if you will look on page six, that is what they are considering their match. Where it says need-based school funding. It says page six on the bottom. And there's a budget, it's the one actually stamped copy on it. And that is what they are planning to submit.
Is the magic oven?
Yes, the oven. All of that would be considered match.
Which is the eighth lien that we've allocated?
Yes. And it would need your approval and Chair Hoffler's signature. This is due to the state by October the eleventh. Also, to be noted is that if they if a county receives a grant through this program, the county will be ineligible to receive allocations from the Public School Building Capital Fund that are appropriated during a five-year period beginning with the fiscal year the grant funds are awarded. So if there was ever any money from the Public School Building Capital Fund, Geeks County would not be eligible if they received any of this needs-based Public School Capital Fund money.
Say it again. Yeah, I understand that the five twenty-two, five hundred twenty-two thousand, other eligible expense. Is there a definition for that?
Not, not on the information, and I have the blank application in front of me from the D P I website. And.
We've allocated eight million dollars for construction. So it seems like if you've got seven million plus five seventy-one, you know, that's all those people at eight. I'm not sure if that's exactly, but it comes close to eight.
That's seven, seven million ninety, like ninety thousand.
Yeah, it comes to eight and one twelve, four and five.
Okay, the recently, the General Assembly in the last session appropriated funds, funds to the tier one counties.
And that's what this is.
This is what that is. They're asking some talk of having bond issues like they did years ago, when we did construction of some of the old schools. Would that, if the state goes to die that line, would that make us ineligible for?
All I, all I can tell you is what this note says on this application.
Okay, it said we would be ineligible for one.
To receive allocation from the Public School Building Capital Fund that are appropriated during a five-year period beginning with the fiscal year the grant funds were awarded.
That is something like maybe the bond, they, they, they have been talking about doing a statewide bonds for schools, because there's so many schools that have, you know, just don't have funds to build schools.
They would, they would want us to participate in the bond, in the bond. You should, you know? There's no way you affect any lottery places.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, because I'm, I'll be honest, I did not connect that with the Public School Building Capital Fund until just now.
Can I help you see the question?
It was probably somewhere in this fifty-page document.
If that Public School Fund, seems to me, just here in the reading, Public School Fund, is it really subsidized by the lottery or not?
Right, because the lottery funds currently are, what's making a very small portion of your debt payment on the school system debt.
Forget one.
A hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It's one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Out of almost five hundred thousand dollars that we pay each year, it's paid from lottery funds.
And I think I heard you say October the eleventh?
Yes. And if you'd like to go ahead and move ahead to the next two, then take a recess, and I can try to call someone at D P I to find out the answer, and then we can come back.
I think we need another answer, just to be on the six side. So let's do that, we'll take, let's go ahead and finish on the all two.
Do we have to listen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's do the all two, and then we will give you a chance to. Okay, do we have the proclamation for the Order of American Month to, to approve? Do I entertain a motion to, in support of the Order of American Month?
Madam Chairman, me and the junior member of the board.
So you can read this.
Oh, you want, you want me to read it?
Yes.
Oh, boy. All right.
He has his outside that valve.
All right. National Long-Term Care Residents Rights Month, two thousand seventeen proclamation. It's all about me, my life, my care, my choices. Whereas there are more than one point six million individuals living in sixteen thousand nursing. Whereas there are more than one point six million individuals living in sixteen thousand nursing homes and one million individuals living in fifty thousand board and care assisted living facilities in the U.S. And whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of nineteen eighty-seven guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens to recognize their rich individuality and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month with the theme, it's all about me, my life, my care, my choices. To emphasize the importance of affirming these rights through facility practices, public policy, and resident-centered decision-making. Now therefore, the Gates County Board of Commissioners should hereby proclaim October two thousand seventeen as National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month in the county of Gates and encourage all citizens to join me in these important observances.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Shall we move? Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Also, we have a letter from EMS. And concerning, concerning a program that they are trying to start at College of Apple Mall to implement an emergency medical science associate group there. And they have asked us to go to support their efforts to do that. Stormy, we have Stormy Butts, who is our chief of our EMS. He has asked us to support the efforts by COA. Certainly will enlarge the number of applicants for physicians in EMS programs throughout northeastern North Carolina. What is the slogan of the board?
Madam Chairman, he provided with a template letter. I would make a motion that we use that template to show our support for the program and allow them to move forward.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Motion's been made properly second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so we'll send out a letter all in support. And it's, you know, that is like health occupations and emergency management, there are job availability, certainly for adult people where they can get trained here and jobs. Certainly something that we are interested in promoting. Okay. Have you signed that again, though? Or have you read the five hundred? Okay, do we have any citizens' comments? Hear none, Commissioner's comments. Starting with Commissioner Freeman coming down this way, and we did not mention that you were tardy to the meeting today.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you'd like to mention this.
I appreciate that, first thing I'll bring up then is a complaint from citizens that touched me and sparked a lot. About our waste industries and the dumping policies. I did refer them to have my original health services for the answers as well, but I did want to ask, and I did not have that opportunity, Ms. Hendricks, if she'd gotten in those complaints. And I believe I have talked to the county manager previously about some of our citizens who have businesses as well as agricultural products that are required to drive numerous miles to the dump site.
I've spoken, I've spoken with Angel White, who is now in charge of the PCG, and she said the policy is, and it states very clearly on the doors, no commercial trash, and that that is considered commercial trash. And it does not need to be placed in the county dumpsters because what they are hauling in at times will fill up the dumpster completely, and sometimes they have too much for our dump sites.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate that, I'm sure there will be some of the paying attention to today's meeting for that answer as well, so thank you. The, as far as our comments, again, certainly appreciate what is brought forward to us. And today we heard some safety issues throughout the county, and the commissioners certainly paying close attention to that as well as the county manager to address those, so we're welcome to hear them, and thank you for your comments. Well, I have heard the same comments, that Commissioner Freeman has been hearing from several sources, and it's probably something we need to look into and give an alternative to. People have been accustomed to taking their, back their containers there, their trays there, and now all of a sudden they were told that cannot do it anymore, and it's something we need to look at. Since three of us happen to be on that board, we, something we need to take care of. Appreciate everybody's attendance this morning, and I appreciate all the participation into your local bill, thank you.
I do want to thank all of our citizens for being a part of the meeting today and coming out and sharing their thoughts and concerns. We as the board certainly want to follow through with those and try to get whatever resolution that needs to be done. And I thank all of my district people for being here, although many of them gone now, but. So we're good at it. Well, it's good to be here today, glad everybody else could attend today and participate. As my fellow commissioners said, we have a, we're going to take a brief break, or maybe a lengthy break, and have a work session on our animal control policy today. So I just want the public to know that, that we're addressing the things that they come to the podium about. And we hope to come up with some, some good ideas there.
I do appreciate our citizens coming to hear us, and hopefully some of them, if they're not here, they'll watch the video of that meeting. I think we are a board that tries to be compassionate and tries to guide some solutions to problems that are wrong for us. Sometimes that is not easy to do. I think we all need calls and keep the prayers, the individuals that were recently killed or injured in Las Vegas. Seems like our country is having numerous tragedies, natural disasters, and this man-made disaster. Certainly they need our prayers, whether they are by what's happened in Las Vegas, or in Florida, or or Puerto Rico in Texas and Louisiana, certainly, they need our prayers. Today we are, but we have closed session before we have our work session.
We're going to have a two recesses for it.
So we want to have a, we can go into closed session because our attorney is here, and then we'll take a short break after that, and then we'll have our work session about the animal control. So I see we have some animal control people here to listen, and it's hard to tell how long a meeting will be. I can't estimate a closed session, but.
Check back at one, if we're not finished, then you can just stay in the lobby.
Okay. Okay, because we don't want to inconvenience yous either. Okay, so at this time, in pursuance of North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight eleven, we need to go to closed session concerning legal, economic development, and real estate and personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
Shall we? Second.
Motion's been made, properly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Okay, at this time I entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Shall we? Second.
Motion's been made, properly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I believe our county manager has an update on information about schools.
Yes. I have an email that is assuring us that the eight million will count as a match for the Need Space Public School Capital Fund grants. I also spoke with someone at the Department of Public Instruction about the Public School Building Capital Funds, and they told me that that is the lottery money that we currently receive each year. And if we do receive the Need Space Public School Capital Fund grant, we will not receive our lottery funds for the next five years. Our lottery funds currently are about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and as I stated earlier, we are currently using those to pay off the current school debt, which might be paid off till two thousand twenty-two.
Madam Chairman, I feel pretty sure the Board of Education are aware of that. Would you send it out yourself?
I do not know if they are completely aware, I did send Ray Dawson an email while ago, letting him know that I had to find out if that was yearly lottery, I'm going to send him a response now, letting him know.
And we have no way of knowing if that lottery contribution would go up or down to the.
Correct.
So if it went up to two hundred thousand, we would still be exempted from.
Right.
How we anticipate a need-based fund. So that could be, we don't know what the dollar amount loss would be.
But we know it's for five years.
How soon do we need this, they need this, ma'am?
It's due October the eleventh in Raleigh.
Today is the fourth.
Yes, sir.
So we have potential losing five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Five two point five million.
Correct.
And if that is a bank of, that or eleven, that is paying current school debt.
Yes, it is paying current, correct, yes.
How much dollars total school debt annual payment?
This year it's about five hundred and five thousand dollars.
It's about half a million.
And to just ask if the two point five million on the application is a loan?
No, it's a grant.
Can that change something?
It's a grant. And so we have to pay. And our matching funds will be the eight million that we're borrowing for the new construction.
Yes, and the person who responded to Ray Falcon's question is the same person who told me that we would lose lottery funding from DPI.
So if the hundred and eleven stayed constant, our loss would be five hundred fifty-five.
Correct.
A hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year, probably about what, a cent and a half technically. Now maybe we need to let the school know that we do approve this need-based grant we would even have to take a hundred and eleven thousand off the year out of fund balance or increase taxes by a hundred, whatever comes out, maybe a cent and a half, I'm not sure.
And the eight million dollars that we are borrowing, the debt service on that is approximately one.
I have to open that paper.
And we were anticipating the tax refunds from the state to save your debt for several years. Distribution.
Now, we did increase the school capital fund this year by about a hundred thousand.
If they want to put that, maybe that would be.
That may be a bit more.
That would be good. That's a good point. You have to keep in mind, again, the hundred and eleven thousand is not.
Or it's staying to go up.
Or down.
Or down. Maybe went up to.
A hundred thousand.
The last, and the only one I can find right now, is zero percent for six million, the payment was four hundred thousand dollars a year. But that was on the six, that was on six million.
And that was what payment?
Four hundred.
I was saying it was around a half a million for the eight million, if I was, I was thinking it was around that.
Well, we were figuring on the rebate that we were getting, we took care of it, so we took a half a million.
Right.
So.
I think we need to expand on what Henry was saying, and let the school know this, and whether we have to have an emergency meeting, or you know, my telephone, or whatever, but I think they need to be aware of it.
There is a.
On the cost of the options, maybe just put in, put in that hundred thousand and increase.
I would, yeah, I think we need to email or.
I just sent Dr. Williams and Mr. Felton an email and told them that we would lose lottery funds, and we're currently using that to pay off our debt, that's all I said.
You can tell how much a lot of the time, sort of.
Well, I think we probably need to table it until we.
I have a question, we can do a phone.
Yeah. Or they even come, we could all come, it would take long, fifteen, thirty minutes to go over those numbers. All of us here at the same time.
I'd almost.
I would, I think prefer that way than a telephone.
I would let you know that Mr. Felton will be leaving to go out and will not be available in person. And I did not know what the Board of Education does about allowing people to participate in phone conferences. But he is leaving to go out of town for an extended period this weekend.
Well, that, well, we got Thursday and Friday.
So they probably would want to get their application in the mail month.
Correct.
Or they, they take it.
Their letter.
Well, I'd say with, most of us, maybe we could find time, Thursday or Friday, I mean, well, I know today's Wednesday.
They're twenty-four hour hitters.
Well, we could do a twenty-four, uh, what?
Do we want to make a motion to have the county, have a county manager receive correspondence back from Dr. Williams of Board of Education regarding our notice to them that we would lose
Hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year, from what we already proceed, if we approve this one. And then call emergency, that we need to, to address based on their response.
And what you can do, because we did give them that extra hundred thousand dollars into their capital, that came from the tax money. You could still allocate instead of giving them that, because I was told, because I didn't ask, could you use that money to pay off current school debt, and I was told yes. But if we use it there, you still have the other, that's not all the money that you receive each year in that tax.
Yeah, I think we need, we need to put this on paper.
Yeah, so that we can figure out where all the money is and where it's going.
I don't think this is approval right now to go ahead with that need-based grant until we get a response back.
Well, how concrete is it? Is their deadline?
It is, it is a concrete deadline that is.
It's a steady line deadline, because there's so much, there's a pool of money available, and people have to apply, and they're on the dischotomy. And so if you're late, you won't get it.
We've gone to a next one. I think, well, that's the deadline. Applications have to be received.
And I don't know that you can do that electronically.
No, what I was told, if we signed it this week, it would be driven Friday to Raleigh, or someone's already going to Raleigh for me. Wasn't clear, but it's going to be delivered Friday.
I'm going to make a, write a trip to Raleigh on Monday, or Tuesday. I think we need to, well, we've already, you have already.
I just told them that was, you know, we would not receive lottery funds for five years, and what we're currently using to pay.
Well, I guess I think this meeting you could power up that we have, we weren't, we are concerned, and we wanted to have a little more time to study the issue and how we're going to make up the hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we're losing. And do they have any suggestions? Since we did give them an increase. And to hear back.
Probably need to make a suggestion too, that we need to live by Florida, maybe.
So that we can meet on Friday.
My, my uncle passed. My, my uncle passed away last night, and we'll know when he lives, and maybe Friday, and it's safer. Just letting y'all know, or the form, you may not need that.
I'm not gonna be ready for, look for Friday also.
Well?
Can we do it via telephone? Well, we have three here, and that's all. No, I don't even want to even call yet.
Just can't vote, it's the way I'm set up.
I'm not seeing, but the people's family just answered, and they respond.
And I might be so good Friday, there's a possibility. There's that. But I mean, after tonight, I can agree, so. Billy, you wouldn't be going all day?
Big for, yes, I don't know what time I do that.
I could call in, but.
But you can't vote?
It's not a problem, a who's?
There's general statutes, because there's been discussions lately on lists or about.
We have certainly done it in advance.
Yes, we have.
I need to take a look at that. You know what section it is?
I think it's in the.
In the booth, I promise you.
Okay, so you have your march in order.
So we'll work it out.
We'll work it out. Okay, do I, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made promptly second, if all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're closing that, and we're gonna go into our work session.